What?
Turn it off.
You can tell us sheets in Jason's house. Those are the three I know we've worked on.
Okay, it's seven o'clock. Let's go ahead and bring the building to order. I'm going to read off some names, addresses, and amounts. And after I get done, if you have anything to do with any of these properties, that'll be the time to speak. Pat Davidson, one eighteen West Monroe, ninety-one sixty-one, Troy Keaton, five oh five South Newton, four fifty-two seventy-four. Andrea Valencia, thirteen South Aircoys, one twenty-five thirty-five. Joseph Irwin, one twenty-three West Jasper, one oh six thirteen. Is anybody here for any of these properties? If you're here for the property.
Not that far now, but I mean, I've already talked to him about it.
Okay. Intend a motion to disconnect? All favor? Unsafe building. Here, Mr. Johnson.
The first one is six fifty-eight South Newton Street, Steve Patriscow. And he had cleaned up most of his yard last time, a month ago. And the order was modified to require that heat, that the following would be reviewed tonight. Repair or replace the garage door, repair siding on the front of the house where the porch is removed, and repair windows in the front and toward the back of the house.
Um, I got the garage's followaway done. Got all the siding off it, the bad siding off it. It's been painted. We're going to put another coat on it. He's got the second coat almost done. Um, I actually got a lead on two garage doors today, but I haven't received a phone call back from him yet. Um, but I, I'm almost positive by this time next month, I'll have the garage completely done. The one garage door, I'm debating whether I'm going to change it or not. It has one hole in it. I might patch it. But I'd really like to have two matching garage doors on there because I think it would look better. And yesterday, I had a friend of mine that I've known for thirty years that used to do my glass work when I had the antique shop in Lowell. He came up yesterday after I got back from my antique show and he gave me a, a estimate. If you'd like to see it, I can show it to you. And he said he's going to do the three windows. He gave me a price here for the three windows within, within question. And I agreed to the, the amount that he put down here. He has several jobs that he's in the process of doing now. He thinks he can get my work done by the end of the first week of this month coming up. So I would be happy to inform the value here that I believe that the garage and the windows will be done for sure by this time next month. And hopefully I can start on the, the last part of the three phases that I, I put it in phases. The last part of the three phases, I'm going to get the front of the house done. So, but I, I would think, I could stick my neck out and say that two of the three phases will be done within the next week or two. One is almost done. The garage is almost done. I've got all the siding off. We took the siding to the Newton County dump. I wish I would have been going there a lot of times. First time I've been there since I've been living in Brooklyn twenty-five years. And I was able to get all that out of there. We got it repainted. It looks pretty nice. So I'm thinking by the end of the second week of this following month, I'll have two of the three things on this list. One of the garage's almost done. Just got one garage door, but I'm probably getting over it. And the windows have been done as soon as he can, as soon as he finishes up with his commitment. Um, but a couple of houses he's doing now, he's doing one now. He has one. After that, he can get to mine. He said probably about the first weekend of this month coming up. And I have a letter from Royal Glass. If you want to see it on the estimates of the windows that were in question.
John, have you, have you viewed this progress?
Yes. He took all the siding off of the garage and then painted it. So he's not there. They put another coat on it now. The garage looks fine. I didn't watch it before.
Do you need another thirty days?
Yeah, I'd like to, I mean, I'm, I'm making progress every day. In fact, the yard is even getting better. I've cut down more trees and, and, and I've had two workers there the last, this whole last week that's pocketing some money that's getting done. You know, so, you know, it's all about getting the right people out there to do the job, you know, if they don't have other commitments and financial things. Plus, I'm running a business too. I have a business I'm running, so I'm trying to, my mother's, I'm trying to juggle three things at once right now. But we're making progress, you know, and I would like another month if you don't mind.
Make a motion to grant another month? All favor?
I appreciate it. Thank you. I don't want to say everything's going to be done, you know, but I'm for sure get two of the three and then I'm going to work on it fine. Get it done.
That'll be June sixteenth at seven o'clock.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen.
Steve.
The next one is one twenty-nine West Curry Street. And, let's see here. Oh, okay. The ownership issue is resolved after the appeal deadline. Something about the ceiling on the porch.
It's completed.
And was that the last thing? Is that, are you done?
Yep.
So John, if your recommendation would be released? Pardon me? Your recommendation is to release it?
Yes.
Can I make a motion to re-release it? All favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate your cooperation.
Absolutely. Happy to get it resolved.
The next one is five oh five South Newton, Keaton. Is he here? This, um, the order was modified last month to require the following actions are going to be reviewed tonight. Remove traction debris on the front porch and around the house. Repair or replace the northeast rear window and repair, repair missing siding on the house.
I told them I got it cleaned off and the blood through is put on.
Yes, sir. Would you recommend releasing the order?
Yes.
On the motion that we're releasing.
To move the section in all favor?
Thank you. Next one is two twenty-two East North Street. And, uh, I have that on June sixteenth.
Which one?
Um, two twenty-two East North Street. Michael Kena Goodman?
Two twenty-two was set up for tonight. Five thirty-two was set up for June.
Oh, yeah, I was screwing that up. I started writing on the wrong file. So, um, so I had five thirty-two Benton Street was reviewing made for siding and reviewing June for the roof and the debris.
You had it reversed.
And, yeah. Are they, are Michael and Tina Goodman here?
Tina.
Okay.
I wait at our basement step also. Um, the two two-two, we've been working more on the yard still and getting more building supplies for the roof and the siding. We've acquired about half of the siding for it. Um, as far as the five thirty-two South Benton, we have got the garage roof redone. It has been completely sealed all the way around. Nothing's getting in or out of it. Um, it has been painted except for the west side has got to be repainted and painted. And I'm working on the siding as we go.
Pressure washed the other day and there's going to be some new roof and shingles put on for the next week.
Is that the five thirty-two?
On the five thirty-two, yes.
I'm trying to work from the garage across.
Okay, let's, let's do these one at a time. So on two twenty-two East North Street, you've been working in the yard. And you, you said you were about finished with something about with the siding?
No, the siding is on five thirty-two. We've been acquiring materials for the siding. But it's quite a bit of siding right now to get and try and take care of both of the properties. So we're spending the money where we can to accomplish as much as we can for you guys.
So I had on two twenty-two, you were going to remove traction debris around the buildings, repair or replace the roof and repair the missing siding. So you're working on getting siding. What'd you do about the repair or replacement of the roof?
We're working on getting the materials for that also.
And, um, remove traction debris around the building?
We've got that and I am in the process of where you guys had a picture last month of the east side of, no, I'm sorry, west side of the house. Um, we've gotten that completely out and then cleaned up. But there are some bags of gravel and sand sitting there because we are muddling that out and then put gravel and sand out and putting cinder blocks over the, or papers or small net props there. So that will be completely clean and functional to put lawn chairs or whatever there.
How much time would it take to finish two twenty-two? The shingles, all of those shingles. It sounds like a little bit of siding and it sounds like you're nearly done with the yard?
Darren's almost done. The siding in the roof, to be honest, probably about two more months financially.
And have you had a chance to look at two twenty-two and is there progress?
They're, they're working on the yard, the house mustn't stay that long.
I'll make a motion to get them to the two months. All favor?
So that will be. July twenty-first, this seven o'clock? And, uh, on, um, five thirty-two, who have the order said, you're going to remove traction debris around the buildings, repair missing siding. That is it? Yeah. And so you're tracking that some siding still?
I am deciding. I'm in the process of putting that up now. Um, we got the, the garage. There was issues with, the rumor had been said that there was rodents getting in and out or vermin. That has been completely sealed with, has new garage doors on it and is three fourths of the way painted. I just need to paint the backside and the roof has been fixed on it. So the garage is ninety percent completed. One more week and that'll be done.
Is, when you say finish the painting, is that the west side you were talking about earlier?
Correct. Okay. And within the week, I'll have the siding up. And then as far as the roof on the west side of the main peak, two weeks, three weeks depending on weather?
Yeah, depending on weather.
So by the next meeting, we should have.
So you're requesting, you're requesting one month on that?
Please.
I'll make that motion. All favor?
And so that is, uh, June, uh, what did I say, sixteen? June sixteenth at seven o'clock.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next one is one oh nine West North Street. Terry?
Chief of Terry, we've sent him a letter here that says she apologized. She cannot be able to make the meeting. She has to be out of town. In regards to the house on one oh nine West North, Smart Roofing is scheduled to repair the hole in the roof the week of May nineteenth. They could not tell me for certain which day we'd be able to do the work, but assuredly it would be that week. I would like to request that the May nineteenth deadline for the work to be done be extended by four days to May twenty-third. I would just make the motion to give her thirty days. All favor? Do you want this to go out now?
No, there was the one where she repaired one and then, then we could see another hole that should have printed. Could have been a new unsafe road order and it just, she seemed like she was taking care of it. So they're trying to revise order, point at the new hole. Something she's on it. Next one is four nineteen West Jasper Street. And that is hood. Here, okay. This one was to exterminate vermin, remove traction debris about the exterior. Either replace the siding or repaint the siding, replace broken and damaged windows. And the Goodland Town Council found that you had willfully failed to comply with prior orders imposed a five thousand dollar fine. And it's set for a review hearing. Um, so I know you were sure. What of those things have you done?
We have, we have been working on cleaning up the yard. I don't have any vermin other than my dogs, so.
One of them is two dogs.
Is there some way their animals could be getting in your house?
No.
Do you know what that was, the vermin?
There is no animals in the house whatsoever.
The yard is just full of everything. From the front porch on back, I don't even know how they walk with their car.
And has there been progress since this was sent?
I haven't noticed. Mark had it today.
And you were served, made first with this word?
Yeah, Dylan did it to us.
You know why Dylan's delivering that? Because you're not taking your mail. And so what I do is take that five or six dollars and add it to what you guys are going to get stuck with paying. And then I send the same thing that's in that envelope to Dylan and have him go out and serve you. So every time you refuse a letter, it's costing you. So just take the mail.
I'm not refusing my mail.
Yeah, we refuse it.
Well, so I've been sending it certified mail and regular mail.
Because sometimes when I go out and check the mail, it, it's normally not there or as it came.
So I'm just, just saying, when, when they come back to me, it just gets more expensive.
Probably.
I mean, I'm, I'm not trying to be coy. Those costs are passed right onto you, so. Um, you might be cooperative if you receive mail.
Yeah, well, we're proactive. We're going to be cleaning up my house more and the property.
So, so I understand that you're not sure what the exterminate vermin was about, but the traction debris in the yard, do you agree that there's traction debris?
Yeah, well, we, we are cleaning it up.
I did, I cleaned it up today.
So what I'm trying to do for their benefit is figure out what, what do you think it would take? How long it would take to do that part? Just the traction debris in the exterior of the.
No.
What, about a week or two? About a week or two?
Can you give me some more?
I, I, I understand. And then either replace the siding or repaint?
It's probably paint because my house isn't painted.
Yeah.
I started priming it a couple of years ago when I ran out of primer and I never went back to it. I have the paint.
Okay. How much time do you think that would take?
I don't think it would take that long.
So, so the goal is to try and get your house looking like others and then they're, they're cleaned up so that this is not. Because every time your house or any other person's house falls in disrepair, it affects other people's property values. And that's what we're trying to stop. So we're controlled. So, so it's not, you know, yes, you're being called out, but only because it needs a push. And so that's, that's the push. So you think that could be done by the next meeting, the painting of the rest of the?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then do you know what we're talking about when I say you replace broken and damaged windows? Are there broken or damaged windows?
Uh, there are all, um, there are a couple and they're boarded over.
Okay, that's what we don't want. So that's not a repair. That's, that's not how your neighbor's house is looking. So don't board over windows. Replace them. That's why.
You, you're got the money to replace them.
Just, I, I understand that it, it costs money to maintain the house and I'm not, and I understand people have different circumstances. I get that. But that's, just for example, that's what he showed up with, with that estimate to do three windows. That's, that's why he got the estimate. So you think there are a couple of windows that are broken?
Yeah.
How much time do you think it would take to get those broken windows repaired?
I don't know. I don't know.
I don't know.
Um, so.
Financially, I can't really.
You think you would clean up the, finish cleaning up the yard and painting within the next thirty days?
Yes.
Do you think you could replace the broken windows within the next two months?
We'll try.
What's up to these guys and what they want to do next?
If you will make a good faith effort and you make progress, not just the effort, but actually make progress and come to this council once a month, tell us what your progress has been and he, and he can see the progress. Then if you could promise us that, then I'll make a motion to give you thirty days on the cleanup and sixty days on the painting of windows or whatever it was that he said. Plus, I'll make a motion that we put a stay on that five thousand dollar fine because I would rather have you put your money into your property and pay us a fine. But you have to work with us. You can't duck us. And you have to do what you say you're going to do. And if you can't, you have to come to us and explain to us why you can't and then we'll work something out. We're willing to work with you, but you have to work with us. All right?
Yep.
I'll make that motion. All favor?
So come June sixteenth at seven o'clock for kind of a review hearing. Is the start plan and not coming to the monthly meeting until you're not, you don't have any more things that need to be fixed?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is, um, three twenty-six North Newton, June. Everybody hear that? This, this one goes back to last year. I'm with Bill Denver, twenty-fifth of twenty twenty-four. Jewel's appeared, Jewel appeared, work commenced, holdback porch. Holdback porch, oh, recited. Heat recited, patch holes in building, still needs new windows. Review set for five nineteen twenty twenty-five. So it was about windows?
Jake, would you say?
I, I thought we had released that one, but less than was more.
Which house then?
This, you wouldn't have been on in November, would you?
No, but he's been in here since.
But Dylan wasn't on this house. Here, we write, we write down what's going on with these hearings so we have kind of a diary of three twenty-six North. It was replacing some windows, all that was left on an unsafe building order that Blue Skies LLC and Dean Jewel. And Teresa Brown and Jeremy Best, but one of Jewel or Brown and Best had a recorded land contract. So they're, they're interested parties and have to get notice. That's why I did that. I don't find it in the contract anymore, but it's still recorded and hasn't been released, so that'll be set for them.
Oh, that's, uh, yeah, that's that greenhouse.
Sue?
He hasn't, he hadn't accomplished anything since. Joining more of the February meeting now I can see, now that's far as siding.
So Blue Sky was served. And Teresa Brown and Jeremy Best, it says not deliverable is addressed because they don't live there anymore. That's why that was returned. And I knew that, but I don't have a number of address for them. And Dean Jewel was sitting here, uh, uh, when you told him to be germanic. So I, can you remember whether any windows were repaired?
I don't think so. I don't think he's done much of anything for two or three months.
Review hearing in thirty days and pressure's memory?
Yeah, I would say we would, I propose a twenty-five hundred dollar fine subject to review. If he will come in thirty days and tell us his progress and, and tell us what he's going to do to bring him to the point.
I know he's been working a lot of hours. But he should be making money.
Does the motion have a second? To move the second in all favor?
And then the last one is five twenty-three South Jean Street, Hernandez. And this is another, this is Mr. Hernandez here. This is another one from last December. And in December, Mr. Hernandez appeared. He has until May first, twenty twenty-five to quote, bring in compliance. Either tear down both, repair both the code, demo one and repair one by May first. Except for review during May nineteenth, send my regular mail. He will remove dog cage and any junk outside the garage to inside the garage.
He's tore down one of the garages. And he wanted to keep one of them, he said originally. But he has not fixed the door on the one he's keeping. So that door needs to be replaced or what have you. Whatever he's going to do, board it up. Till he can get it done.
So either fix the door on the garage he wants to keep or tear it down?
Right.
I'll make the same motion I did to venue. All favor?
That's all.
Anything else?
No.
Financials, Tina?
At the end of April, we have, in general, we have three hundred and four thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars and fifty-six cents. And water operating, we ended with sixty-one thousand, three hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixty cents. Sewer operating, two hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Trash, thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and ninety-nine cents. And it gives us a grand total of one million, seven hundred and ninety-two thousand, sixty-one dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Do you need anything, Tina?
Yes, I do. The refrigerator and freezer that we have in our bathroom that we loaned out when we rented here in Dyer, need to, we need new ones. The refrigerator keeps leaking and the freezer, you can defrost it, but it builds right back up with ice.
What are you talking about?
Well, we have, to see how much. Yeah, they're just regular stainless steel. I mean, one's a fridge and then we have another unit that's just freezer. Single door.
What are we talking?
Probably. I don't want to say a thousand, but.
Yeah, they're pretty wide.
They're, they're commercial size.
I'll make the motion that up to five thousand or six thousand?
I say so because when people are renting that, that's what they use. So to have the width for their food and stuff that they bring in, that's what's nice about those two back there.
When we do use them for the church dinners, I didn't know you were bringing that up, but when we do use them for the church dinners, they are packed full, like full size. You know, so I'm assuming like people are doing graduations and stuff like that. Probably somewhere. And also food they're playing, so.
Make the motion to improve up to six thousand dollars? All favor? David's here? Anything for Tina? Fire department?
Fire department, since the last council meeting, we've had ADMS calls, three fire calls. Three members will be attending, uh, electrical vehicle training at Rensselaar Fire Department tomorrow evening. Uh, Grant Township got us some new nozzles and training props. And we found a cracked rim on the brush truck. That rim was discontinued. And the department has bought four new rims, put on the brush truck so it's safe. We couldn't find just a single one to replace it. So we pulled it out of our donation stuff and purchased rims. That's it?
Anybody have anything else to write? Police department, more?
We had forty calls for service, fifteen were handled by the county. Fifteen were handled by us, ten were public service. And I did not break it down, I'm sorry, for me and my deputies. Um, zero arrests, one ticket, three warnings, twelve ordinance violations. Out of those, on mowing, I have three that are due today that did not get mowed, so I'll have to get, uh, Dustin in case to have those properties mowed.
Anybody else mowed?
No.
Anybody have anything to mow?
I had a, was one of those properties the one next door to me?
No, but I'm glad you mentioned that, because I, that one slipped me.
Okay.
All the way down where?
Where the house burned?
Yeah, but, yeah, where the house burned. Um, were we mowing that last year? We were. All right, I'll do a, I do a, I'll do a contin-, I'll add that to those continuous for you then. So, I suppose whenever their mowing guy gets to it, he'll, he'll hit it. Thank you.
Street Water Sewers is out here. Uh, we have a quote from Miracle Playground in Indiana.
Dustin has the quote, but John got the quote for a new slide and bolts and nuts and stuff. It was like eighteen hundred and forty-four dollars.
Eighteen eighty-four fifty-eight.
And what it is, the slide is, in my mind, it's kind of dangerous. It's broken, well, it's supported at the bottom. And flaps picking up to scrape kids when they, when they go by, so that definitely needs to be removed or replaced. And then there's just another part of it that just needs repaired. John?
So ironically, I've got a brochure on my desk back here that's for a company that repairs that stuff. They do plastic welding, and they, they fix slides and things like that, so just want to let you know that. It's, I don't know who put it there.
Is eighteen hundred to fix everything?
I think.
Does eighteen hundred fix everything, because I know there's other things?
I ordered, uh, twenty sets of bolts, pushers and nets, all stainless steel. I don't know how many we need, but I know we needed four for the swing and four for, for the, uh, safety brackets and stuff.
So you would just order the parts and, and put them back on, or somebody else would come back on? That's all?
I believe Dustin, in case, if I will do that.
I don't know how that swings and, or, I mean, the, uh, the slide's gonna come. I think there's, uh, three braces underneath it from the ground up to keep it solid. I don't know if I'm gonna send them braces or not.
Good motion to approve that signature? Good move, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, John, for keeping an eye on that. Uh, Durham's mowing has been, uh, mowing the park for one thousand, six hundred and twenty-five dollars per quarter. They've been doing that for a long time at that, at that amount. They would like a thousand dollar increase per quarter. It seems reasonable to me how to make a motion that we approve that. Second. Good move, a second, all in favor? Shane?
I guess I would just wanted to talk about the town property that's next door to my property. Uh, and I live at, uh, six fifty-three South Newton Street. I'm not really sure exactly the size, maybe quarter acre. But, uh, my request is to see if I could take ownership of it, and then I would continue to maintain that area if possible.
Are you talking about east of your property now, back to the, to where that ditch line is?
Correct.
Okay. I wouldn't have any issues with that. It's landlocked. Yeah, we wouldn't be selling the actual ditch itself, we'd just somewhere up to the boundaries. And I know there's legal things we have to go through, the property.
If you do a resolution to declare surplus property and operate itself from due settlement, there's kind of a different procedure for that. And, um, but we're gonna have to disprove it. And if it's some easy thing, you know, you want twenty feet of blah, 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 so again, there's a thing of surveyor.
I'm just trying, I'm trying to find, what was the, what was the address again?
My address is six fifty-three South Newton Street.
Who would not want to get rid of anything that's so down into the ditch?
Correct. I, I've maintained that land for quite a few years for the town. Unbeknownst to most people, other than me and my wife wonders where I am sometimes, but.
You're responding directly east of your house?
Directly east of my house is the property that I just spoke to about, with Dylan about maintaining it. The town property just owns the very back corner that curves around the ditch.
You're probably directed south of the house.
So, I'm sorry, yes, yes, south.
Yes, he's talking about east, up to the ditch line.
Yeah, so, so I'm trying to describe that. I'm positive you don't have any, any description of that, uh, for the threat that's happening too. I'm talking about threatening the little person.
Yeah.
Isn't that what the double, used to be a double, it's up there?
It's behind that. But the building foundation for the property right next to me is still there.
I could say.
What, what's highlighted here, I think he already owns that. He just, he just wants from that line to the ditch.
I'll come up there and show you.
Does that mean he owns that already? I didn't even look at that.
I believe, I believe that he does. You, you, you already own. This is your house here. You already own that part, don't you?
No, this, that's the neighbor's.
Here's the.
That's the house of the birds.
Sorry.
Okay, so you're on.
This property was just to the west of that. No, to the north of that.
Confused. That.
Yeah, can you make it? Is this your building here?
Yeah.
Okay. The aisle leads to?
Yeah.
Right here.
Then how far back do you go?
Back to the ditch.
Back to the ditch. So you're, so this is just the piece right here.
With the town of.
So, so you're not interested in that, you are interested in east to your back?
No, this one here. I, I own all the way back here to the ditch. This is the spot right here.
Oh, so you are interested in that one, the top line?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, how big is that?
I'd say it's between a quarter and a half figure.
This was the north and west of the ditch, right?
The, yeah.
And not including the slope?
Not including the slope.
And, I mean, I can try and describe it as, um, twenty foot north of the center of the ditch, be- beginning twenty feet, beginning at the lines, I mean, twenty feet north of the center, but, well, forty feet, catch, total, right?
I don't know, because see, they made that so it's like two cent, it's, it's got, so it's quite wide.
Dustin, drop that. Help, he'll make sure we keep whatever, just, just say part of it gets whiter or something. He wanted it whitest. Just make sure you don't cut out some of your smoke out from it.
Yeah. Um, we need to come up with a, a description that's gonna satisfy the courthouse, the tax people.
Okay.
That's, that's the rub right now. If you can figure out a way that we can get that done, I'm, I'm good with it. But we gotta get that done.
Okay. So you're gonna need to talk with someone at the courthouse, or?
Well, no, we should have our guy measure, in my opinion, uh, the widest spot, so that I can say if he says you need to cover at least thirty-five feet of the slope, I can say a line thirty-five feet from the center of the ditch all the way around that parcel, so that that becomes the new boundary.
And now we're looking up to the courthouse?
Yeah.
For the tax people?
It, it is a lawyer to cross it up. I'm, that's, that's a lot. That's a matter of law.
Okay, and for me?
But, yeah, so they'll be able on their side to refine that center of the ditch. They'll have that identified. In fact, they probably have it identified right now. You just can't see that. Um, so who's gonna contact Dustin to?
I'll talk to him.
If, if, if he needs an explanation of the concept, I would give him a chat.
I'll talk to him.
Yeah, are there any, on that slope, were there any, like, culvers or tiles or something that come in? Like firmer stuff that needs to be addressed?
At one time, it was going to be from the east, not necessarily from the west, but I don't know if that ever.
There might, I think there's one in the corner on the opposite side near the field.
Right, east side?
Correct. Right where it starts to make that, that sharp bend, there's one there.
Yeah, I don't know if there's anything from the west side.
I, I believe there's not.
Interesting.
Okay, all right, well, give us some time. You're not in the big.
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just keep taking care of it.
I'm with you.
What's thirty?
Um, four things. Um, the Gold Torch attorney, um, was, was giving some language for the memorandum of understanding about this annexation. And so I talked to him and, um, he, he wanted me to research, I don't even know where to begin, because this isn't covered in the Indiana code, and there's not gonna be any court cases about this, but whether it was possible to delay the annex, how long? Can, can you move forward with your process of annexation and then rezone without recording the ordinance that makes it annexed? And I said, no, because you never put the world on notice, and the county government would be part of the world on notice. So, I mean, if, if you don't record a document, it's only a battle between you and the other party. And it's not, and no one else is bound by it. Even if you show it to them, they're not bound by it. You gotta record it to make them react to it. And, and you've been to the same law school, I don't think it's, kind of, that's pretty basic property law. He said he was gonna look, and he wanted me to look, and I said, well, I mean, I know there's no law that says you can delay an annexation, but still get the benefit of it. I said, and it also sounds like you're ordering lunch, eating it, and proposing to pay for it later, which is probably not gonna fly. And, um, he, uh, he wanted a, a chance to look at it, so I'll follow up with him. I, uh, he and I are, we talked two weeks ago, and, um, I didn't do anything to research that, because I don't know. I know, I look up all kinds of annexation questions for all kinds of towns, and there's, I will tell you, there's absolutely nothing like that crazy notion.
And that's not something we'd go for anyway, so why spend any time for?
But, well, I don't, I was trying to get out of him, why do you accomplish this by that? I mean, he's like trying to keep his, not show his cards or something, but yet the benefit of knowing what's in your hand, and, and I was just, not only knowing what's in your hand, but then going ahead and betting based on what you just told them, and I don't know. That, that, I said, I didn't see how we get the benefit of the bargain on that. Um, because it's kind of like, um, train of cars in order, and you're proposing to take one of the cars out and send it aside, and I don't see how you legally do that. I've never heard of that, and I don't know how that would benefit the town. Or, or him. I can see how it would benefit him, I mean, so they're, they keep their options open for a while, I guess, maybe not. Well, I was wondering if maybe they hadn't decided on which parcels of the ones they've asked for, they were actually gonna develop, and that allows them to pull one out then, which means you just lost that patch base. I mean, it, it does, it would never work in your paper, that's the problem. So, anyway, I'll follow up with him. Um, had a question about, he had a question about a split, and, uh, it had to do with the cemetery. Um, and part of, in addition to the cemetery, is farmed right now, and the tenant farmed it by the terrible acreage, and the church paint, or a survey to be done. And when you look at that survey, and where they identified the existing grave markers that are part of this parcel work cutting up, splitting, where the survey shows the line, and where Beacon shows the line, they're in two different places. And so we sent an email, Michael Manis, I talked to Michael Manis about it, because he represents the buyer. And, um, they need permission, is how all of this started. They need permission to be assigned a new parcel number on a split in the town, because it's within their payment zone of the construction. That was what I heard. What it's gonna do is leave, so there's the Roman Catholic Cemetery to the west, and then there's, uh, Mount Calvary Trustees Cemetery to the east. And on the western boundary of that property to the east is like one row of monuments and then a shed. And if you look at Beacon and use his measurements of how much field to cut out, he'd be right in the middle of that shed and going right across the, the, and so, anyway, we sent an email to the surveyor and pulled him, showed him exactly what the issue was, and he said Beacon's wrong. Beacon, the lines on Beacon are not where they should be situated, and it's not supposed to be used that way, and the evidence why we would be asking. And you personally looked at those monuments in that shed, and he got no problem. He says his survey is correct. So I just need to tell the auditor that she can split it. Which is gonna leave that little strip, and I don't know where they grow after that, but apparently that's one of the concerns. Apparently you don't continue burying if you don't have a church. I don't know how that works, but, um, there should.
All the same, you don't continue burying?
Uh, no, so, so you don't, you don't continue using, this is according to Michael Manis. You don't, you don't continue burying in a Catholic cemetery when you don't have a church. And that was one sentence that summarized about four paragraphs of content. Um, and it, I don't care as long as what's there is a legal cemetery. I don't see where they grow now, because they just literally are, but they may need to, I mean, I know, there's all kinds of good reasons to have the self-simultory ground, something along those.
Who actually owns the cemetery?
So, it, it's labeled as the trustees of the Mount Calvary Church, or something like that. Michael Manis said that is an extra parcel that the Roman Catholics buy, when they thought they were gonna need to expand it. And he didn't understand why it was called Mount Calvary, but he said it's the same church, and there's not a, there's not a Mount Calvary church, yeah, Mount Calvary Church that buries people in Dillon. It's not like that. But, um, they're trying, if you look at the aerial picture, you can see it's a terrible acreage east of the cemetery, and that's where they're cutting off. Was, how many acres was that?
So, are you telling me the Rome owns the church, the cemetery?
I'm saying the diocese does.
Yeah.
And it doesn't fowler, and that's not uncommon. There's normally, normally when you have a Roman Catholic cemetery, there's always a public cemetery next to it, where the non-Catholics get buried. And so you guys are to the north, I believe, in Dillon. And outside of Fowler, the Roman Catholic cemetery is to the south of the town cemetery. Just across a gravel road, it's not a Kelly Road or anything. But that, yours is out right next to there, isn't it?
Right, so if you're going north, then.
Right, so if you're going north, the Catholic is on the west side of the road, and the non-Catholic is on the east side of the road.
No, that's not right.
Catholics on the east.
Catholics on the east, and the Protestants on the west.
Really?
The Catholic is on the southeast.
Protestant is also on the east.
Yeah, I can truly go and see.
But it's only about half of that east side that's Catholic.
Right, and if you're on the north side of, the east side of the road, that's the non-Catholic.
Yes.
That's for you sentence.
Yes.
Did Rick, while ready to go, or he was taken aback in that what's happened?
Yeah, they'd given, or sold, or bought it off the church, or, they were keeping an acre and they've been farming for years, but since the diocese took over the cemetery and the money in that there, playing hardball.
So, Rick's playing hardball. You can see the shed there in the southeast quarter, that is in the strip of ground that will be left behind after the split. That split will cause that, that split will be north-south, and it'll cause that outbuilding, that little shed, and the monuments due north of it to be in a little strip, and there's, I guess, part of the Catholic cemetery to the west there, is what's highlighted there is the Roman Catholic cemetery. And if you click on the one next to it, it'll say like Mount Calvary or something.
But the actual boundary isn't where it's shown here, it's over...
Yeah, you can't rely on that.
Yeah, the boundary's over there.
And, and he said, the surveyor said that he was sure that there was, that his line will not cover headstones or grave sites, they're, they're all intact, and that road will be with the Catholic cemetery, and I think, including the shed, will be with the Catholic cemetery, and the tillable ground will be, what's depicted there, it's not. They're basically cutting up its one acre of tillable.
Just out there about a hundred, hundred feet to the east is where all the flags are at, where the surveyor...
Now, it's this, because I looked it up, I personally remember when I did, in the survey, you can see where he located the shed and the monuments on the survey, and, but his measurement for this field on the survey was a hundred and thirty-six feet, and if you go from this corner, a hundred and thirty-six feet, you're almost all the way through that shed, and he was like, it's not like that, Beacon's wrong, and I know why you think that there's a problem, and that's not a problem, so, so there's that. And then, he just sent me another one, that somebody needs a...
Yeah, well, the heritage of this is wanting that.
I don't think we assign, I don't think we actually assign numbers, I think we say it's okay to assign a number, and I think, does the surveyor in town, is about to assign this?
They told this gentleman, Michael Peters, to call me and give them the...
I mean, you know, we don't have authority to do that, and that takes, because they try, for nine-one-one purposes, they'll measure out, like where, you know, if you're at nine tenths of the way up the road, you're gonna be in the nine thousand, you know, they'll have some way to identify that parcel, that would be a surveyor function, but I saw your email, and I'll follow up with the surveyor team, and if you want to see, you can see what we're talking about, because I can say, I can know who affects house numbers here, it's the surveyor in that county. And then, the last thing, I'll follow up on Dustin's email and get Inka going, I guess.
Okay, and I'll, and I'll talk to Dustin about that as well, and have it sent back to you and give that to you.
So, and I may make a list of what I think the steps are, the order that people, the dominoes that need to follow, in order, because remember, we gotta get, there's a particular size by the land that we've gotta do, and Inka was just the first one, and if Inka was a no-go, we're gonna go ahead, so I'll, I'll make a list of what I think those people to be contacted are, and you can agree or disagree, and that's all I'm looking for, because that's kind of about created a kind of a shopping list, a punch list of things that you need to do in and order.
Okay.
Would Elaine have anything to do with that? Would Elaine have anything to do with that?
You're back to the cemetery now?
Yeah.
Elaine used to sell plots for the cemetery, so, so, we have a letter here from Amanda Daniels, then, oh, she's at three oh three West Doe Street, she had a broken sewer pipe under her kitchen sink, we don't have anybody here, did you have the nose in water without the sewer?
They did not, she showed you pictures.
I'm gonna make a motion to give her a sewer dust up through that leak, call the favor. Mira?
Hi, yes, Zara and I have a presentation today, but before that, I would like to talk about the social media contract, it ends the end of this month, and I would like to propose that we renew that for another year, with the same terms.
I'll make a motion to renew the contract, second, call the favor.
Thank you. I don't know, you wanna stand up here?
Sure.
Yeah, can you tell which is which?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, we're here tonight because we believe in this town's future, and we wanna be a part of it. I'm Zara, for those of you that don't know me, and this is my twin sister, Mira, we're behind the team, The Harvest Hangout Play Cafe. We're creating something that doesn't exist in Newton County, or in any surrounding areas, a cafe serving specialty drinks, a dynamic indoor playground, a dedicated party venue, and a year-round hub for the community. We have toured the southwest corner of this building, which is currently used for storage, and we see real potential in that space. We would like to lease approximately six thousand square feet, with the option to extend to seven thousand five hundred square feet over time, we would like to lease it for a minimum of ten years. We believe The Harvest Hangout can be a main attraction in Newton County, given its location, since it's right on twenty-four, and twenty-four sees nearly four thousand people a day. This is a chance to create a destination for both locals and pass-through families, and show them what this town has to offer. We're not just building a business, we want to plant roots, and we're here to ask for the town's permission and partnership. Before we're able to lease that space, we need the town's help with the core infrastructure repairs. As you all know, this area has sat unused for years, and we sure, you'll agree, it actually needs a lot of TLC. Specifically, we are asking the town to build a small parking lot on, and sidewalks on the southwest side, sorry, on the west side of the building, to ensure safe, accessible entry. Also, bring the building up to code, which could include possible updates to HVAC, plumbing and water systems. Next would be to update the restrooms to be code compliant and family-friendly, with features like larger, accessible stalls, and a baby changing station, and repair of the existing ceiling, to ensure the space is safe, and clean, and visually appealing for families, and patrons. Although our overall investment in equipment, furniture, and appliances will exceed this amount, we are allocating forty-five thousand dollars specifically towards the build-out of this space. This includes construction, constructing walls, installing a basic kitchen, and adding finishes and fixtures to create a high-quality, functional space, foundational upgrades that will support our operations while also modernizing it, and enhancing the building for long-term community use, even beyond us. In recognition of this substantial investment in the build-out, we propose a lease-abatement agreement for the first three years, followed by a monthly lease of twelve hundred thereafter. We've built a strong, sustainable plan with the guidance of the Indiana Small Business Development Center, the Newton County Economic Development Center, and Demont State Bank, and as a matter of fact, our mentor from the ISBC is here, Donna...
Her advisor.
Yes, she's helped us a lot. So, with their support and with your support, The Harvest Hangout Play Cafe can turn this unused space into a vibrant hub and a proud part of Goodland's future. And we understand that Goodland right now is going through a comprehensive plan, and we just wanna be part of that revamp. We do have some visuals to illustrate what we're thinking, our vision, along with a copy of a bid for the build-out and improvements. So, that bid that you have in front of you is a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and that includes the last three bullet points, which would be a total investment of one hundred and five thousand dollars. The first bullet point is not included in the estimate, because they specifically do not do concrete work, and we have received three verbal estimates, however, and we, if you will turn to the visual, this picture. We are thinking about a parking lot that would fit approximately twenty cars, that would require a parking lot of about, for a size of six thousand five hundred square feet. Right now, concrete jobs are going for about seven and a quarter to nine dollars per square foot, which would total about fifty-three thousand dollars. We understand that's a large ask, we think that we could also phase it in two parts, which will lower, which will lower the initial cost, so if we can include the infrastructure repairs, and the initial parking lot of maybe ten cars, into phase one of the comprehensive plan, that total would be around one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars.
Is that, that parking lot?
So, that's the existing one right now, by the gym, that would be our build-out, so this, the bottom of the page would be twenty-four, so we propose that the parking lot gets built right here, right here, yes. So, oh, sorry, again, so, this visual is just what we think that this area could look like in five years. We know there's a lot of revamping going on, and right now, we want the infrastructure in the building to be repaired, with the parking lot to be added as well, here at the bottom. And, just an idea, I know that we've kind of thrown out there before in our meetings, that a splash pad would be amazing in this area, we are thinking, why not put the splash pad on the northwest corner, and create kind of like a plaza area next to it? And I know there's a playground out there as well for the head start, for added safety, we can maybe, and some of the revamping suggests five or six-foot fences around the playground, just for privacy and safety. But, our vision is, this is just kind of what we think would be great for Goodland, a plaza, a little, I guess we can kind of show that to everyone, too. And if you turn to the next page after that as well, this is just our, a little mood board to let you know what kind of facility that we want, we want something that, you know, brings in families, the community, and we do really, really believe that our vision aligns with the growth of Goodland. So, this is the building right now, and is that where you were in the parking lot, a plaza?
If you want to sort this out your own, but...
Sure, yeah.
So, do you have, I'm the one that has to sign off on that split?
Mm-hmm.
Should I do that, or?
Yeah, I'll let the auditor know that you're gonna sign off on it.
Okay.
So, we, we are not architects by any means, but this is just a quick visual of what we think Goodland could look like, like I mentioned, there's nothing like this in any area in Newton County, the closest place you could go to for a cool outdoor plaza like this is probably Carmel, so, why not bring something like that to Goodland?
So, would you, would you be interested in a gravel parking lot to start with?
Yeah.
That way it could be, put in a base, and let it pack, so that when we come back for the, more of the permanent, it would have a base?
Yeah, absolutely, we just think adding a parking lot of any type would be great, just because we know the south side entrance, if we do lease that space, is going to be the best accessible door, we wouldn't want them to come through the north door, because the generators are out there, so, yes, as long as we have some sort of parking on that, in that area, we're good with that. Yeah, and we also want it to be inviting, and any of the terms that we've mentioned here, of course, are negotiable, we're just throwing out ideas, and just, you know, giving you guys our vision.
Let me make, let me make sure I understand this, but you're asking us to make a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar investment in our building, and to build a parking lot to beat it down?
Mm-hmm.
So you're asking us to make that investment, and if we make that hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar investment, then you're making the other investment to the inside, to do what you just described?
Yes, our total investment in our business is actually gonna be a hundred forty-five thousand dollars, but specifically forty-five thousand dollars of that is going to be for a new kitchen build-out, which is going to be usable in that space even beyond us, but of course, we wanna exist for ever and ever, until we retire. And the minimum...
So, what, you're inside the building?
So, that is going to be the Play Cafe, so, it's kind of a newer concept, but it's basically going to be a coffee shop with light eats, we're gonna offer specialty drinks as well, and then there's going to be a separate area that's going to be a party venue, for any sort of party, and then also like an indoor playground for kids.
That'll be the one, but south of the gym, that's it.
Yes, yes.
How would this affect the batting cages?
Yeah, so, right now, we would use that space for storage, we would ask the entire space to be cleaned out.
And it'll turn, it would have to be set up for batting for the athletic association?
Yeah, at the moment, though, we would not be using it, we actually are planning on putting a temporary wall, because that would be where we would extend out later on, so the seventy-five hundred square feet that we were proposing later on. Yeah, we would be okay for short-term to keep it there, but we would ask for, just for you guys to make sure that the space is, maintains clean, just because even in touring the space, we see open, you know, food, containers, water bottles, so that's...
The batting cages are really set up, I know a big group would want to expand in that zone, but right now, it is definitely set up, or it could be partitioned off where it would not even have to be part of your space, or it could be separate, where they're not in your business, I guess.
Yes, exactly, that would be another issue as well, is, we just wanna, or concern, is that we would wanna make sure that the indoor playground stays as part of just the business, and it is private.
Okay, let's go back for a minute, and go over what the town, what the town's one thirty-five would be used for, and then what your one fifty would be used for.
Sure, okay, the one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars would be the build-out of the parking lot and sidewalk, it would also bring up the building to code, which would be, include possible HVAC updates, plumbing and water systems, and we know that there's been pipes bursting and leaks there, so we just wanna make sure that is up to code, and update to the restrooms, would, would bring the restrooms up to be code compliant and family-friendly. Right now, the stalls are very narrow, and even for handicap accessible, we need, we need wider stalls. And also the repair of the existing building, and that's going to ensure that the space is safe. That would be the ceiling, so, you know, paint at a minimum, just to make sure that the genit is safe, visually appealing. And those asks are listed here on the bullet points, yeah, right here.
Where'd you draw, how did you draw one thirty-five, you have quotes for that?
Uh, yes, so the estimate here includes the last, this second, third, and fourth bullet point, but it does not include the parking lot, I've gotten three, we've gotten three verbal estimates for the parking lot, so, the overall...
At least three are included in one fifty.
Yes, and then, so forty-five thousand would be the new kitchen, which is what we would cover, and then the difference of one fifty to the forty-five would be one hundred and five thousand dollars, and then the verbal estimates that we can receive from the town, or from the concrete contractors, would bring it up to one hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And we are investing forty-five thousand dollars for the kitchen build-out, but that doesn't include the rest of the hundred thousand that we're gonna invest in it as well, including the floors, including the equipment that we're gonna buy for the indoor playground and the cafe equipment, but the forty-five thousand, we feel like is a very substantial investment, to partner with you guys, you know, to bring the building to a more modern, clean space, because it hasn't been used... know, to bring the building to a more modern, clean space, because it hasn't been used for years. And we want to make sure that the town of Goodland is also growing along with other towns in Newland County, and we feel like this, you know, town really needs something for the community.
Bill, where do you see the end of, where's the money coming in to cover up?
For us?
Everybody, everybody's spending money, let's cover that.
Yeah, so we are working with Demott State Bank to get funding for our part of the investment and with the community, the comprehensive plan that Goodland is going through right now. I know that some of that is grant money, some of that is solar, so we're asking for that to be phased into that plan, the comprehensive plan from Goodland.
I think what his question really was is what's your income look like?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood. As far as our profits, our profits are gonna make money. Yeah, we're gonna have a few different revenue streams, and we're going to have the indoor playground. So from that, we're gonna have memberships. We're also gonna have drop-in play, and we're going to have some amenities, some things that you could purchase for the indoor playground part. Do you want me to talk about the cafe? Yeah, as part of the cafe as well, we're gonna offer a lot of special things, different things that are really not offered in the community. So that's gonna be, you know, sales from that. We also are gonna offer party rental, like for the venues, we're gonna have packages for that as well. So different decor, different tiers, as far as like, you know, if you want a basic package or something that's set up and it's just ready to go for you and you just enjoy your day.
So you're gonna be in charge of either this or the venue?
Not the, not the, not the community center, we're talking about the old school building. That's unused right now, that has been unused.
The west side back here though?
Yeah, where the storage is. And I mean, we will initially be working there as well, including families, so we're not gonna actually, I guess, yeah, we're reinvesting our initial income, probably for the first year, back into the property. We also are avid volunteers of the community, so we want to partner with all the, all the organizations that we partner with right now to kind of give back to the community as well. But Jennifer, did you have something?
But I think it's important to talk about, this concept is successful in other cities, smaller towns. So it's not a concept that they, you know, they're bringing it here, but they did shadow a company up north and really learned a lot, I think, during that process, if you want to talk a little bit about their success and how you can see that happening here.
Yes, we went to a play cafe in Dyer, which is a little bit bigger than our town's here, but they have a small space, you know, a couple times bigger.
It's the concept.
Yeah, the concept is new to that area as well, and they have a smaller space, probably about 1,500 square feet, and they service basically families with children, five years and below. And we just learned a lot about their cafe. They sell a lot of coffee, specialty drinks there as well, and their, their party venue is always looked. So we learned a lot about them. We basically got confirmation from them as well that we're doing, we're on the right path. We, our, our business plan, our software that we're planning on using, however wanting to reinvest back into the community, it all aligns with their success as well. We're, we're modeling the same here.
This membership, they have, do they have to be a member to use this?
No, no, you can come in even just to buy a coffee by yourself. You can, you know, sit down and enjoy the amenities, basically. You know, you can buy a sandwich or have a mocktail in the middle of the day, which is a non-alcoholic beverage. That, that's, well, you gotta, you gotta drive safe, no drinking and driving. Right, we want to welcome the whole community, not just for parents that have kids, for caregivers as well. If you have grandkids, you could come in with your grandkids, or just you yourself can go to the cafe. The membership part is for parents and caregivers that don't want to think about having to play the, pay for the indoor playground every time they come in. So they can pay, you know, let's say, $100, and that will get you eight, 10 play sessions, where they just check in with us and we see, okay, you've already paid, you can go right in. So it's kind of like, like a, like a gym, you know, like a gym membership. You pay per month and you can come in a limited amount of times typically, so that's kind of what the membership is for. So we're offering that, you don't necessarily have to do that, you can just pay every single time you come in for the indoor playground portion, but the cafe itself will be separate and, and we won't, you won't have to become a member for that.
Senior citizen.
Yeah, we'll have discounts on that.
What do you drink, or are you thinking the playground will be appropriate for?
Up to 12 years, yes. And now, you know, we understand there's age differences with siblings. We, we won't have playground equipment for older than 12, but we will accommodate them. We'll have, you know, an area where they can come and be on their iPads and, you know, sit in.
I can see teens eating out here too.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I'm just speaking from, I, I can see this very well, from a parent, from a teacher's standpoint, like, I can just see it very well.
Yeah, and we want to like have this space to be, not only for like the winter times when you want to do something with your kids, we want it to be something fun in the summer as well, you know, just beating the heat, just something fun year round. And we are safe people, so your kids can come to this community hub and we will take care of them like they're our own. And we want to empower them to know that they can do anything they set their mind to, and we also have a lot of programs in mind where we would love to encourage teens to help the younger kids and like learning STEM activities, things like that. So it would be awesome to have, create new leaders as well. So we have so many ideas of how we just want to, you know, make this a full circle thing.
We talked about safety, how about along 24?
Well, that's why we're wanting to create the parking lot entrance off of 24.
Not directly off of 24, but from half the turn, yeah.
Discussion?
So you're asking 10-year lease or three-year lease?
Yes, the 10-year lease shows our commitment, it's also part of our commitment. And also, the funding that we are receiving from Demott State Bank, our loan term with them is gonna be 10 years, so they would like to see that loan length.
To me, I'd like to see something that would happen, like, you don't know how we'd come up with $150,000 over time.
Well, we, I think we could do it, we could first, we could do an additional appropriation on one, because we got, we got money that's not appropriate that we built up over the years by not fitting our budget down to zero over the year. And we've got some money in various funds in here that, that we could use. We got economic development funds, we've got, we got tip funds that we can get our lawyer to be a little bit creative and help us out. So I guess I would make the motion that we earmark and dedicate $135,000 to this. I think that, since we're gonna go with gravel to start with, and we get a base out of it, we'll have street milling and stuff we could possibly use as time goes on. That would be a lot cheaper, but you're gonna come up with cost overruns as we get into doing these building renovations, so that'll quickly eat up any savings we would have on, on the parking lot, although we still would have a good parking lot. And I'd make a motion that we do this and dedicate $135,000, and we will work with Tina to come up with the $135 and how we would do that, but I'll make that motion.
I would just like to ask if you guys do, they did pick up that whole quarter eventually? I know in the long run, that there's something looking to do for the athletic association for an alternative to the batting cage, because that will be affected long-term. And that's a use that during the summer, or the winter months, and that if the baseball tournament uses it, and we don't have any options, I'll, they could do something with that.
And we can also partner with you guys, I mean, our interest is building something for the community, and we don't want to take that away from the community. So if you, we can come up with a way where our business is safe and, you know, you guys can still have that space, we're more than willing to work on that.
But it has to be open and access to it.
Okay, yeah. Is it, if we have a sidewalk that's directly to the door, will that affect it?
It doesn't work yet.
Yeah, we basically just want a sidewalk to go to the door.
Some, sometimes.
Okay, yeah, sounds good.
Okay, let's bring the bill, let's bring the room back to order again.
Thank you.
And I think, I've made the motion, and I think Gary's really ready to second the motion with some contingencies, you like, you wanna enumerate those?
Have you guys sat down and worked up a design, you know, something on how much difference the bathroom needs to be and all that type of stuff that you're saying that needs to be, I mean, is there actually a design of it?
There isn't, we really are just asking for, so right now, the men's bathroom has two stalls and they're like tiny, so maybe that can be just one, one stall, make to one stall, and then there's like five year, year olds there. So we're just asking for like the infrastructure, and then as far as like the paint and things like that, and we would, we would cover that cost. So we don't have a design for that part, we had a contractor come over on, on Friday, so he didn't have time to draw up those plans, but we would be happy to get those to you soon.
I would second that emotion based on, you know, we end up with a design that we approved and, and move forward.
Okay, yeah, we would work with the existing plumbing that's there, we would just maybe eliminate a toilet or so to make it a wider stall.
Yeah, more accessible, family friendly.
So it's been moved and seconded, all in favor? All right. Post? You don't?
Thank you. We are very excited to partner with the town and bring this business to the community. We're open books, so if you guys have any other questions, as we see us around town, please come and ask. Thank you.
Anybody else have, anybody else have anything they'd like to discuss with council?
I'm here for three weeks, I'm not late for the house.
What was your, your six north Newland Street? Can I refind this $2,500 box?
Okay. So, back in November, you appeared, work had commenced, the whole back porch was recited, the paint was recited, you patched holes with the building, you still needed new windows, it was up for a renewing of it.
Yeah, I was busy with farming and stuff, so you get in on time. I did get some windows ordered.
You did get some windows ordered?
They're not in yet, I'm waiting for them to come up from the arms. I think they're a little more expensive than I thought, so it's gonna be, most of the summer that process.
How many do you need and how many do you have coming in to start with?
I got two right now.
Ordered.
Three, actually.
Ordered.
Ordered, yes.
And how many are broken?
I don't know, I'd have to go through it again, because I'm eliminating windows.
But you're not boarding them up, right? Because that wouldn't be matching the buildings in your neighborhood. That's not a solution. You can't board up those windows.
No, I'm taking the windows completely out, and then, from the outside, then side over it.
Right.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, yeah. Someone else has brought up the solution of putting boards over windows?
No, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do it the right way and just rip them out if I'm not putting a window in there, it's gonna be, like my bathroom, for example, it has a piece of metal on it right now, because when they put the bathroom in, they just went over the inside and boarded it up on the outside. Well, when I put the new window, that window has still come out, and I'm gonna actually put two by fours in there and put plywood in, and I'm gonna slide that.
So let's talk about two things. How much time do you need, when are the new, three new windows gonna be in and how much time do you need to install?
I mean, they should be here next week, so.
And how much, I don't know what.
What your windows are gonna take.
Okay. So by next meeting, those would be in?
Should be, yeah.
And then to board up and cover up the windows that you're going to do that to, how much time do you need to do that?
I, I'll have it done all in a day, which ones I'm gonna do. Because it's gonna be a process doing windows and the siding and going up, it's gonna be, because I want to get the weekends to be working, but it's gonna be most of the summer process, because I can't afford a contractor to come in and do my whole house.
So you want 30 days to do the windows and you want 90 days to do the siding? Or you're telling?
To, yeah, to a section, it's gonna be section by section, like I'm, I'm all worked for it. It's gonna be most of the summer.
Let's give him 30 days to do the windows, 90 days to do the siding, and we'll review it in 90 days. And if he's made good progress, showed good faith effort, we can extend, and I'll put a stay on that earlier $2,500 fine for not showing up.
Okay.
So that's the motion we have to take. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
All right.
Yes. Gary, Dave just ran out.
That's so hot. What the noise was?
So we're talking about June, July, we're talking about August?
Would be the date of your, your due hearing.
Are we done on that subject?
Um, wait, one more question, just wanted to make sure, you're getting, you got, you're getting mail at that address, right?
I did get certified thing in the mailbox, but I didn't get time to, neither of us get time to go up there and get.
The reason why I confirmed with you the date of August 18th is, I just told you to your face, so you're just gonna get it by regular mail. That's fair. It's a lot easier on you.
A lot easier on me to try and get the mailbox to town.
Is that it?
Yes.
On another subject, we had, is that COVID money that you were audited on?
Yes.
We had, we got money, the town got money because of COVID and all that, and we used that money to go into rich projects.
It's kind of the wastewater treatment.
Warrant treatment. And so we were audited, because, you know, the bad day on everything, we were audited and everything was wonderful, Tina did just exactly what she should have done, and we passed that audit with flying colors, so proud of Tina for that. Anyone else have anything they'd like to discuss with council?
I just want to give a thank you, I'm here on behalf of Teminight's Church. About 18 months ago, when we came up and just asked if we could use a gym every month for our free meals that we've been doing, and I just want to give you guys a little bit of an update, we are averaging 125 to 150 people that are coming up every month for the meals, and so we just really appreciate that you guys are letting us use that gym space as we reach out to the community, so.
Awesome, that's a nice, really nice feature.
We were super busy the other night, right Dan? We were all like, whoa, so it was a good problem to have, so we just appreciate that you guys are letting us use that space every month for that.
We're glad you're here.
I'm curious about where things are standing with the house across the street for me. I know that it's supposed to go to court and, but does anybody have a fourth name?
330, yeah. I've, we drafted it, it's not filed yet, it was drafted last week and we didn't file it yet.
I'm just curious, it's been not a great situation for a long time, so I was just curious about that. The other thing, some people have been coming and letting me know that they were concerned over the parking, they have already touched on this. There is a lot of weeds within the tiles that create the playground, and they're like prickly sticker weeds, and I just kept forgetting about it to like reach out to you guys and let me know about it. I don't know who takes care of that. It's like inside the mulch part, you know, and the rocks, so I was over there this past weekend, it is quite expensive weeds in there, and I thought, oh yeah, that's gonna, some kids are not gonna feel good if they get in that. So I didn't know if there's somebody that can take a look at that and get that taken care of, or if maybe John and Cheryl have. if maybe John and Cheryl have a solution for it.
I'll discuss that with Nester.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I got, are they ever gonna flush hydrants? We've talked about it, we're gonna get, I haven't seen hydrants flushed thoroughly flushed since Sam was here.
Oh, we've flushed them.
Jim, have you seen them flush them? I'm uptown, I mean, the way they used to be flushed, the street would be wet for half a day. You don't just turn them on and off, you'd have to flush them.
Do you have to know anything about flushing channels? I'll discuss that with Nester.
Because we got a lot of rusty water down there, next month she might be gonna have.
Next month she might be here.
That, yeah, one more thing, two more things. The ballpark, the diamonds are fine, but where people walk through, to me, it's been embarrassing all year. I mean, I've been out there at the high school and from other towns, I mean, the grass is that tall. That and the lot behind the Catholic church that went on to the town now? The old parking lot? That hadn't been moved yet. I'm done.
Really, one more? Okay, anybody else?
I guess I'll just follow up on what he said, like I, people are posting all over Facebook about the water and it was literally so bad, my ten-year-old was refusing to get in the tub because he thought he was gonna come out earlier.
Well, it's, you know, flushing is a fine line. You can create problems with flushing, you know, by stirring up things, the sediment, it's going to be in line, all water, like that's gonna be. So it's a fine line. It's how much you flush, the way you flush, the way you flush and so on and so forth. But I will, I'll talk to Nester about flushing, so. Anybody else? Make a motion to Jim.